Okay, welcome to the Daily Mail's Editor of the Board session for the Canola County School Board. Thank you for coming. We'll introduce ourselves and then we'll give you a moment to introduce yourselves. Starting on my left, this is who?
I'm Brad Heckle, editor of the board.
I'm Brad Heckle, editor of the board.
I'm Don Surgr, editor general.
I'm Philip Rommel.
I'm Dean Benj, editor general.
I'm Kelly Barrett, editor of education.
And then we'll move left to right.
If you'll say your name and your position in life and a little bit about yourself.
I'm Brian White. I'm a parent of two kids, my wife, and I'm an attorney. I work with my dad. We have a law firm that we started a year and a half ago, White Law Offices. And I've been an attorney for the past eight years, working in various forms with Jackson Kelly and the State Center for Finance Committee. The reason why I'm running for the board is because I want to make sure that our educational system is one of the best in the state. I think education is key to economic development and we need to make sure that our workforce is trained to provide the workforce that we need for the kinds of jobs that we want in this town. And the way we do that is to start with education.
My name is Vix Kraus. A little bit about my background, I'm actually a chemical engineer. I work for Union Carbide. I'm now owning Brickhouse Cardio Club. We're a fitness studio for young guys. So we have our offices here, we franchise throughout the country, build that business. I'm a parent. I've got a boy right now in kindergarten and another boy coming in. We came to kindergarten, not this fall, but next fall. And a former senate leader and sort of longtime legislator, too. The reason why I'm running, I just feel like we can do better. I feel like we have immense opportunity here with a massive educational system to not only, you know, to not only have a better governing structure within our board and our administration, but to really get down to the little gritty of fixing the issues that need to be fixed and moving our county forward with the best county system in the state. I feel that we're lacking technology-wise. I want to create a technology endowment that allows us to fund technology in our schools. And I just feel like there's just so many ways we can improve and I'm running for that.
My name is Cal McKinnney. I'm a 40-year employee of the Canola County School System. The last 28 years I was principal at Sismo High School. With my experience, I believe I can step into this board position and hit the ground running. I've seen lots of things over the years in the 40-year stint. I've seen some good things and I've seen some bad things. I've seen some wasteful spending. I'd like to progress that whenever I get that opportunity. I'm really interested in the board gaining the trust of the public. And we do that by not having any agendas. And I think I can be part of that change. I'm interested in seeing some change as far as, not change of superintendent necessarily, but change in ideas that the superintendent has. And I'd like to be part of the change.
Who are you?
I'm Pete Quinlan. I am the former mayor of Sistersville, West Virginia. I'm a former deputy secretary of state. I'm a former director of the CETA building. And I am a former state presiding judge for the recent year. And I am resident retired. I've been on the school board for 16 years, four full terms. I've enjoyed the work. I've enjoyed serving the people of Canola County and I'm very proud of what we've done. We have a good board. We have a good fiscal situation. We are in good shape. I'm proud of the work. I would like to continue. That's why I'm running.
My name is Tracy White and I am a substitute autism mentor for Canola County Schools. I have three sons with autism. I am president of the Autism Society Chapter in Charleston and I head up a social skills group for teens with anxiety issues, who were bullied and something like that in schools. I am running because I feel that special education needs a voice on the board, allow a voice. Eighteen percent of Canola County students make up, eighteen percent of special education makes up Canola County schools. And I just don't feel like, there's a huge disconnect. A lot of parents get frustrated and they're pulling their kids out of school because they feel like they're not being heard and their children aren't getting what they need. That's not, in my opinion, the way to go. I think that communication is a huge issue with our, between the parents, the teachers, the administration, the board. I think there's a huge disconnect. I think we need to put a little passion, a little fire back in the board and realize at the end of the day, we're all in this for success for students and we've been learning how to somehow work together and hear each other's voices without, we're not all always going to agree. We all don't agree, but we all agree to get along. So that's why I'm running. I just want to make new changes and hopefully bridge gaps between communication and the school board.
I'm Curtis Martin. I have six children, four under the weight of the school system, one is a nurse, one is a dismatting. I'm a right-hand front secretary.
You've also asked a question in the background. Sorry.
I'm a nurse. I had front secretary last year. But I have six kids. I'm a former member of the county schools and I've got one or two going down. My little one, he wants to start for another three years. And I've got a grandson that's at Dale. Centered over at Creed Gate. And I had two other grandsons get ready, one start next year and one year after. I currently work at Labor Field as a gate attendant in there for 30 years. And I used to manage my parents' business for 15 years and I owned my own business for five, four or five years back in the day and I sold out. I just want to run to make a difference in the league prices in that days.
Okay, hi, Becky Jordan. I've been on the school board for 12 years. I'm a lifelong resident of Canola County. Graduated from St. John's Jackson. Married to a man that's also educated through Canola County Public Schools. We're both very believers of our school, Public Schools, which is a parent of Canola County. We have four children that have all gone through the school system, some still in it. I have a master's in social work and I haven't worked in social work in, gosh, about 12 years. But I'm always busy working somewhere in the schools or handling properties that we have. I feel like when I first ran for the school board, I was very disturbed because at the time, 12 years ago, there wasn't a parent on the school board. And I feel like there at least needs to be a parent for a different idea and brought that to the board. And also, it disturbed me that that board lacked professionalism. I felt like it was a joke in Canola County. And I really feel like this board is very professional. This board treats people that come to board meetings professional. We respect each other. We have a good working board. We might not always agree, but that's fine, we're not supposed to. And I feel like I've stood up to some strong issues. I will continue to stand up and continue to try to push Canola County so we're ahead of the other counties and hopefully ahead of other states. And I feel like we have a lot more to go. But I work hard and I really appreciate being on the board, appreciate families and want to continue. Yeah, thank you.
Just to get procedural things out of the way, the district issue with school board elections is always interesting.
We're okay. There's not three people in one district running.
Okay.
Pete and I do live in the same district, but no one else is running that's in our district.
That's me, too. Me, too.
Oh, excuse me, I thought it was, I'm sorry.
Two or three, about me and the only three that are, well, two in district.
Yeah, we're districts, we're against the same district.
So if there's three, we're going to be the highest and the third person.
Third person.
Yeah. Two, yeah.
We talk, one, one, one. It's very, it's very.
And just to matter basics, how many seats are open and how many?
Three.
Three.
There is some.
Three.
Yeah. We're just.
Pete, call, see, I see him go ride one.
Yeah. Curtis. The lowest one would not be on the board for a place.
That's not a question. We're having a discussion.
Is that his electoral vote?
We're having a discussion, guys.
We're just clarifying. So there will be at least one new person on board regardless.
Yes, Bill Ragdon died.
Right. District three.
And his, the person did not run.
District four.
District two.
And one. Basically, we can all win except for three. Three of us. Round number three, one of us.
Since we went left to right, maybe right to left for another third question. School calendar construction has always been a recent years a big issue. This year it was an issue in a practical sense, so much school time was lost at the beginning of, I guess you'd call it, the second semester. What way do you see the board's philosophy taking shape from here on out regarding school calendar, start time and end time in the near days?
I was, I'm going to take credit, I took credit or criticism. I was the one board member, I feel like it really pushed, and it took several years to get the board to support it. I wanted the semester to end at Christmas as college students because, I mean, now my older, they're my stepdaughters, but I watched them do reports and study all through Christmas break, but it didn't make sense. And it's taken years. And because also, they wanted to make sure we had HVAC, you know, we had to do our homework, a lot of work before we were able to start school earlier. And this was the first year. Goodness knows we didn't know about the wind or the water, but then we ended. I mean, kids, kids and staff, it was the first time, could actually take a break through Christmas break. And I feel like that's going to continue. We, at this time, don't have any discussion of year-round, but people feel like we cheated them out with summer. Well, no, it just starts earlier and ends. And this year I had a son that started school early and had a sport and it worked out fine. I mean, I could parent worry, I mean, coaches worried about the two-a-days and they even said, you know what, it all worked out, it was fine. So that's what I see. I think it'll continue going like this. And I'm hoping that down the road, we don't wait, no matter when Easter is, that after the third nine weeks, that's when we do a spring break and that we let families get in the routine. Because this is a really late spring break and I feel like everybody needs a break. I mean, maybe we do an Easter weekend, but it's all about just giving everyone a little break so you're ready to go back again. Now, a former educator, he might have a different idea, but just as a parent, I mean, I'm tired, my kids are tired, it's just time for a break before we get working together. So that's how I would really like to see the calendar. Okay, you understood all that?
Yes.
I don't have a problem with the way the calendar lays down. They start early, you get out, but it really equals out. It starts with what is, few minutes earlier than it used to be.
August 10th, we were.
Again, super enriching.
He's on the fourth issue, though.
In the end, it all equals out.
This year, the early start date, I don't think is, will be as big as an issue, only because we're getting out May 23rd. However, next year, we have the possibility of going until June 30th, you know, God forbid our pandemic happens again, or something like that. We miss all those days at school. And you know, if you're talking about going until June 30th and then starting out August 8th again, that isn't a summer. So my biggest issue is the fact that we always have to vote on the calendar. Why can't we just determine, even if that's to end the semester before Christmas, that's great, but why can't we agree to start, like, the second Friday of August from here on out will be the first day of school? As opposed to every year, we have to vote on it, every year we have to change, every year, parents are mad because they plan vacations they can't take. It used to be, it was the last Friday in August for a very long time and then, well, Monday, I think it was, and then it went back to Friday. And I just don't know why we fluctuate every year now. If we've decided that we are going to finish the semester before Christmas, I just hope from here on out, we can say Saturday, specific Friday or Monday or whatever, of August, and that'll be our start date from here on out. Personally, I'm like old school. I like you go after Labor Day and go, but we don't do that anymore. That was, that was a long time ago. That's, I prefer that because you get the whole summer. But I mean, and I'm not, I'm a fan of year-round. I know that I get booed and pissed, but I am a fan of year-round, personal, personal reasons only. I don't see year-round anywhere near our future, but if I had my preference, we would go after Labor Day, you know, but that was over a long time ago.
You might have more working parents on your side. Were you saying all this?
Our problem has been that the state has set bookends. When you can't start before, you can't end at. Now, next year, they're adding five weeks into this space, so we have much more latitude next year. I do not believe that starting on August the 8th is a good idea. I still don't. I, I've been away from school a long time, but I still remember that school didn't start until Labor Day and it ended on Memorial Day. Now, I know that's not realistic, but August the 8th is not, is too early. So I hope that next year, we'll be able to move inside this new group, this new area with much more latitude and start much later. I would like to start toward the end of August.
I'm told that you voted for the August 8th start date. Did you feel like you had to or do you regret that vote now?
No, but the alternative was the August the 8th or the 15th. I mean, it wasn't my choice.
No, I will defend you. You know why you voted for it? Because they would have lost a paycheck. We didn't know that. So that's why he didn't want the employees to get a paycheck. I helped y'all.
You have to remember, when you, what does it mean?
But that's true, they would have lost a paycheck.
They came to us and told us if we started.
Yeah, we didn't know that when we started early, they would have got an extra paycheck. No one told us that they got an extra paycheck. And then if we would have started it later this year, they wouldn't have. I wanted to start early anyway, but none of us wanted them to lose a paycheck. No one complained when they got the extra paycheck, but they would have.
I see.
Yeah, that's why.
But I still don't see no difference between the 15th and the 8th. I mean, they're both bad.
Mr. McKinnney.
Well, how do you address that? I would just like to see, with the five weeks we're talking about, I'd just like to see us settle down and get some consistency. So everybody will know from one year to another, they can plan vacations, they can do whatever it is they plan to do in the summertime. So they will know without interfering with, I'm going to take my child out early, can they pay their finals early, can they do this? I've been there, I've done that. I'd just like to see us have some consistency so that parents can plan and create such conflict with parents in schools. Because they really get upset with you.
I think something, now, I'm sorry, I want to interrupt, but the state department keeps changing this on us. They sort of keep changing the rules on us, too. But I agree, everybody who are having these.
You think if you had been over five weeks now, they've inserted in there, you think there's going to be a lot more changes coming?
They'll find something else.
We can blame it, it's a lot, it's a lot.
But again, consistency, consistency is my thing with the calendar.
I think that we need to do multi-year calendar, for one, so it is not a war every single year. Number two is for some reason, and I don't understand it, I mean, I understand this, there's this singular reason to have this early calendar is to end the second semester before Christmas. And that's because we pushed that August calendar back away from the end of August to mid-August, so that you're left with a week or so after Christmas that you've got to prepare for your finals of that semester. I don't understand our just desire to sacrifice May for August. I don't understand, I think that there's no reason. And as a parent, whenever I was in the legislature, I probably, I have to go back and make my stances, I probably was for early calendars because without having that kid in the system, it's a little different. But whenever you have a kid who's in kindergarten, summers are important. You know, summers are an important time to be able to, for those kids to enjoy summer and to take part in what summers are about. Summers are about having fun, summers are about summer care, summers are about sports. It's okay, it is okay that kids actually learn and have fun outside of a standardized test in front of a computer. And so my hope is to push that calendar back into late August, which is what every single parent, I should say, most vast majority of parents want, and they want their summers back. And I hope that we can take our summers back. And it's okay if we go into May. And for some reason, in our school system, you're actually able to handle it because many of our schools, even today, do not have the adequate HVAC, adequate cooling to be able to cool down in the worst hottest month of the year on August 9th. Many of our schools can't handle that, that cold. And so it's not a good learning environment anyway, the first two weeks of August. So my feeling is I want to push that calendar back late again. I want to take back summers for our parents. And I want us to understand that kids learn more than outside of sitting in a classroom. Learning in that summer is an important learning aspect for every kid. And so let's take our summers back and hopefully we can move that calendar back. But I do think, I agree with what's been said now, we do need consistency, we do need to go to a multi-year calendar. We need to get this out of just the battle that it is every single year. Parents don't know what's going on, but we need to move away from that. But we need to move that back into late August to do that.
So it's consistent?
Consistency in my way, that's what it is. I'm happy with that, otherwise we could fight that every year.
When setting the calendar, number one priority should be to make sure our kids get the most amount of instructional time as possible. Having said that, I'd like to see the board experiment with ways that local, each local school, like system, not just school, but school system can set their own calendar. I think if they can get some consensus, consensus on which local school system, what calendar works best for each local school system, I'd like to see that because each school system's different. People on the eastern end of the county may have a different idea of what they'd like to see, people in cross lanes. And I think that's the best way to go. I think we need to get more local control to our schools. So that's one of the ways I would do that is to try to make sure that each school system and there's consensus between parents, teachers, principals of what calendar system they like and work towards that. And I understand that's a long way away because we have state law issues and stuff, but with this innovation, we can work towards it. Piedmont is on a different calendar than the rest of the county and I think it works well for that community. And I'd like to see that being put in, just control of the board of the calendar being put in place around the calendar.
You couldn't afford that.
I want to ask a kind of question, slightly different from the incumbents and for the challengers, I guess we'll start with you, Ryan. But for the incumbents, the question is, what do you wish people who aren't on board know? And for the challengers, what do you wish, you know, that people on the board of education understood about those who aren't on the board? If that makes, does that make sense? What do you really think, God, you just can't get this through to the board?
From just my, my conversation with people on the campaign trail, it seems like there's a feeling that the board and, and more so, not the board, but the administration doesn't take into consideration everybody's input into the decision-making process. So that's one thing that I would like to communicate is that maybe the administration as a whole, not just one person, but the administration as a whole, needs to listen more to people. And they don't need to, they don't need to do everything everyone says because you can't because of your administration, but people on the campaign trail do not think that the administration is listening to what, they're not getting the ability to provide the feedback that they want. So that's one thing I would say to the board. And also, as a board member, and this is what I plan to do, take, go and get that information yourself and make sure you're not just getting the information from the administration. Because that input is needed from everybody. Like I said, you don't, you can't do everything everybody wants to, but you need to get as much information as possible.
I think that there is a huge disconnect between what the board hears from the administration of what's going on within the schools and what the people actually in the schools will tell you. And I think the decision-making process is a totalitarian process from the administration up to the board. I think the board is totalitarian, I'm saying. There is a, there is not a communicative process. We don't know what's going on. And whenever there's, people don't know what's happening within their schools and they're not being communicated with, it breeds this frustration and irritation and anger among parents. And so to me, I think that the board needs to listen more to the parents, to what they're being told in the meetings. Every school board meeting I go to is a rosy picture of exactly what's happening in maintenance, exactly what's happening here. You go out and you talk to parents, when you talk to teachers, then there's, there's literally ceilings falling down from water coming in. Yet if you went to the board meeting the night before, you would think that the maintenance department was just humming along and everything was great and every school was perfect. And so I think there's a disconnect there that needs to be changed. And a lot of that, I think, goes back a little bit to what Ryan said, too, is just that communication. The website is terrible. There's no process of where maintenance is being done and there's no, you know, public way of knowing that. There's, there's just not communication between the administration and parents. And that's, to me, is frustrating. And it's frustrating as a parent and I think as a board member, I certainly would be frustrated if we don't, if we can't make that change. Or if we can't.
I want to say the same thing, but in a different situation, different term here. My philosophy is, if you want to make a change in the school system or any system, you involve the people that's out there implementing the change into making decisions helping you make this assume for that change. I just don't think that's happening in our school system. Having been in it 40 years and experienced it, there has been times in those 40 years, yes, it was. But not, not at present time, I don't think it is. I think there needs to be more input from the employees, advisory council, for lack of a better term, to give input to the board, the superintendent. And at least we, we hear what they're saying, at least we would listen as a board. And because on what he said, the public does not think the board listens to them. They didn't think that. Whether it's true or not, that is their reality. And some way or another, we've got to change that. And I think you change by involving people and getting input. And again, like he said, you don't have to, we're all not going to agree. Now, I know it's a time factor. I know it's a huge issue, looking at you two. I know it's a time, time issue. I know it takes a lot of time to do that. But for us to gain the board public trust, we have to reach out, actually, to parents, to teachers, to administrators, to all involved in what's best for the people.
This is a huge bureaucracy. We have over 17,000 customer service students. We have over 6,000. We have a budget of $235 million. It is a massive bureaucracy. It's hell to manage. And it's, the day you finish with everybody on the same page is a good deal. And we try to do it and we try to do the best job we can. Our maintenance department stinks. I know it, you know it, Dr. Durrey knows it. You do the best you can. We know there's current, certainly there's going to be a disconnect. You can't go out and tell these thousands of employees and get input from them every day. You've got to fly yourself and hope you get to the airfield on time and you land it. Because every day is an adventure. Think of a winter morning at 4:00 a.m., Durrey is standing out there on some road. And this is a very diverse district. We have Urban, Charleston, then we have to go up Cabin Creek, way up to Hollis. Different weather conditions totally. Here's this man standing out. Here's this man standing out there at 4:00 a.m. He's got to make a call. And you know he's going to make people mad one way or the other. And he's not always going to be right. No one's going to always be right. God misses a few, not many. But it's tough. It is really tough. And it's a big sprawling situation and we're doing the very best we can to manage it efficiently. I believe we are. I believe we're doing a good job. And I believe we're doing it within reasonable economic parameters. And I believe we're giving the children a good education. I've got two grandchildren in this system. And my granddaughter got every honor you can get. And she is going to a good college with good grades. And my grandson's has a bad, a tough academic life. But anyway, I'm very, very proud of this system. I think we're doing a good job. I think we're doing it economically. And we're producing the best product that we could possibly do. And I think the children are getting a good education. Thank you.
I just hate the mentality of it being us against them. I think as a parent, it's your responsibility to go to the board meetings, go to the LSIC meetings. Whether you think they're hearing your voice or not, you go to every meeting and you use your voice. I think the parents don't think they're being listened to. I think that they need to feel that compassion and feel some empathy. Not saying feel sorry for them, but feel some empathy that they're there saying, you know, spilling their heart and soul out to you. And you're just like, okay, next. They don't, I look like that. They don't like that. We have that telephone system that will send me fifteen text messages, five phone calls. A carrier pigeon will fly by to let me know there's no school. And we all know, if you are a North County school parent, you all know when preschool enrollment fits because it's happening. I get a call every single day. Why can't we use that telephone system to say, hey, we have a board meeting tomorrow and here's what's on the agenda. Hey, we have this one on tomorrow and here's what's on the agenda. Let parents know. Let parents be involved. Not everybody has a computer. Putting it on the computer may not work. But everybody gets that phone system. So I just think that we need to open up our communications and let down our heart a little bit and realize we are on a team. And both sides need to give a little bit.
All I hear is communication. I asked to leave out the field and everybody's like, what are you doing? Really, you gave a lack of access to communication yet? Because when you, Dr. Barry, you were down against the common assistance.
This is super tense.
I remember back later in the Superstate. I mean, they're just like, they're all on different pages of what I hear from different ends of the county. I'm like, that's a big question. I really, you know, what do you do? Because if you go tell this one, like you said, well, go to the eastern part of county, it is different than the western part, the northern part. We're all that worse around here. But all I hear is communication between everybody and you. Just starting to try to get communication, get that back to them.
Okay, you're the incumbent. What's the question? What we'd like people to know?
Yeah, maybe we should play us there, or understood.
One thing I'd like people to understand is a lot that we would like to do, whatever, is dictated by state law. If someone here complaining what we do, well, anyway, it's a lot dictated by our legislature. I mean, I think our legislature, I'm displeased with them. Our board meetings are, people come and speak. There is never a time, and I think I can speak to any of our board members, but if any of us don't get a call, you call central office, get any of our numbers. And the same day, we're not reporting back to them, because Dr. Durin's already on the issue that we called him back, is he not, Mr. Paul?
Always.
Always. We call him and he calls us right back. He is on it with Mr. Hollinsworth about this, that. Or a principal issue, whatever it is. The last, I checked our website, you could go right on, I spent a few months, and click, and a board member will email us. There's just something about being a parent though, you just never can make us happy when you're dealing with our babies. I mean, I know that. As a parent, I mean, one person rocks the baby of one of my kids. I mean, it's probably a sensitive subject we all have a face. It's just pleasing parents because we can't please everybody and it's hard. And another thing I want people to realize is, we are here to set policy. Policies so hopefully our children can learn more. And that we have an outstanding school system. We don't micromanage the daily activities of the operations of North County Schools. Now, we get problems and we get calls about it and we do let Dr. Durin address them. It is not our job, we call a principal and find out what's going on at that school. What's the call, maybe about Herbert Hoover. We call Dr. Durin. We're only his boss. We are not Mike Kelly's boss at Herbert Hoover. And, but I feel like we always, it's the same day we get back to anyone that calls us. All of us do. Because we hear the issues and we talk about it. But, and I'm going to say one more thing. We have, by state law, we have an LSIC meeting once a year at every feeder school area. We try to move it around. We advertise. We get handfuls of people. Most of it's staff.
Very.
You go to, and in Kelso's, we're all, you go to a sporting event and they're all there. I mean, I just wish we could make people be a better parent too. So it's frustrating and we're just going to continue to work it. And like she said, I think it's a big, great idea. Maybe we did put on a call-out system about the board meeting and agenda. You know, that's a great idea. But it's not perfect, but I think we're doing a good job. I think Dr. Durin does a good job. And she'll plug along.
I live in Puckham County. I have a hundred percent access left. Finally, I got top of that. Sixteen years ago, people were ticked off on Puckham County Board of Education. We had fourteen people running for like eight, three seats, maybe it was two seats. They turned things around. This time we have three people running or two seats?
Four people running, of course.
Yeah. Being a lucky one, please. Not to compare the lefty election to the hidden bird. Two-thirds of the people survived the hidden bird. How can we build good trust, the voters' trust in you? I don't want to start with this Jordan, but if she wants to, go ahead.
I don't think we're going back.
When did we lose the trust?
Let me start with me.
When did we lose the trust?
We lost it when three-quarters of the county said no to your excess levy.
Who was out campaigning against me? Yeah. You forget that. I'm the president of the school board and I had enough guts to stand up and say no.
Well, how do you get, how do you get the support of the people for the board?
Well, here's how you do it. You tell them the truth. I had to stand up and tell them the truth. Now, they were told that we were facing imminent bankruptcy. We were, we were heading up, we were running in financial default. Last night, we bought two hundred and thirty-some thousand dollars worth of iPads. Now, that's a long win for bankruptcy. Now, you must understand, and you do understand, because you know, this system eats seventy percent of every tax dollar in this county. Every other person, the county court, the sheriff, the circuit clerk, the county clerk. Everybody else lives on the under thirty percent. We eat seventy percent of the money. I think people basically do trust us. Because now they've got control of their levy. They're not going to ever fake it unless they give it up. They've got a cap on the levy now. They tried to take it off. They were wrong. I told them they were wrong. They weren't listening to this. I had to, campaigning against it. But the people have control of this now. They've got control of the excess levy. They can't go beyond what they want. They must never give that up. Eat the lid on it. If you don't like the way it's going, raise it.
To me, that created a disconnect where the school system will say, we need these things, we'll pass the levy, and more presidents says,
No, 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 no. They told her they were going wrong. They didn't know what they were doing.
As much as I respect him in many ways and care about him, we are the only school system that has a board. I mean, they say this in the state, school board terms. We are the only school board that has a school board member that campaigns against a levy or a bond. Now, when we did the excess levy a few years ago, he kept quiet. He didn't work for it. He didn't work against it until passed. But I do think that is a huge red flag to people. Hey, not everybody's for it. And also, I'm going to say this. I supported this excess levy because I want to continue library. I want to continue. I wanted iPads in our classrooms. I wanted more than what we could do. I wanted more in our vocational programs. But, I supported it. But I didn't knock it enough. I feel like this board, this administration, people didn't really understand what this board even, we, no one did a good job. So, and they hear someone, no, and they hear someone say no, you know what, of course. And you know what, I have a lot of on our property. I would have taken a huge chip. But to me, education is the heart of our community. We don't have a good, strong school system. We don't have anything in this community. And it had scared us because we've lost Head Start money. I'm the board member that represents Head Start and prepaid, and that's scary to see our cuts.
The excess levy didn't last.
No, but I mean, that's what, I know that. But that's what alarmed Dr. Durin and alarmed us and Mr. Russell, our treasurer, about that we probably need to go ahead and do this. And we would love to put, doing all these days off, we'd love to put an iPad in everyone's hand. So, you have one more. You're awesome. We're not there yet, but we're still plugging on trying to do it.
I like to come on, I do.
Okay. What was about to rain?
I think, I think it's up to the board now to determine or try to distinguish what the public is saying to us. What are they saying to us? Are they saying that we don't want improvement in our kids' education? I don't think so. Are they saying that we don't trust you folks at the central office and you board members? But I think it's our job to determine what the, what the public is saying to us by taking that vote, that percentage, against the levy. What are they saying to us? And I think it's very important that we, we take that information and digest it and figure out what we, what it is that we need to. Because I don't think there's a parent out there that will turn our education up for the kids. And that's what some of the levy bankers want to do. But maybe, maybe not.
Or we have to take that levy. We go live it. By law, we have to follow what it says.
I understand that. But what I'm saying is, we need to digest what the public is saying to us. And it's important for the public, if they're more than us, that we have that kind of communication. I really believe that. Otherwise, we're never going to pass a levy or we're never going to improve our kids' education. Nobody's going to ever want to spend any more of their tax dollar on education. So it's important that we as a board, you as a board president, determine what the public is saying to us.
We're spending seventy percent now.
I think what we need to do, and this is what I've taught people, we need to sit down and look at all the programs that the school system is spending their money on. Evaluate whether those programs are properly working. And then if they're not, we need to either revamp those programs or we need to cut them and get rid of that one. I think that's something that the public is asking for us to do. And if I were elected, that's one of the first things I would do, is go and look at all the programs. I've been talking to a lot of people on the campaign trail. They're telling me about all these programs that they don't think are working. So we need someone that is independent of anything that may not have, that didn't start the program and is not biased and properly evaluate those programs and do a good job of looking at that and determining whether they're necessary or not. And once we do that and we prove that the money is being spent in the proper place, I think that's when the board can have faith restored.
But this wasn't the fifty-one forty-nine split. The people in this county spoke very loudly, very clearly exactly what they thought about the current board and the levy that was being proposed. And it's interesting to me because like I said, I was listening to the politics out there except in two thousand eight. Wasn't really, didn't really get involved in it, but you listen to Hoppy and Rachel's paper, they must have something to say. And that levy fired me up. And it fired me up because, wait a second, we're going to do this on a Saturday in November, whatever, WTIUS. They were trying every possible way to get as few voters out as possible to vote in that election. And it backfired and they got hit. And so now, we've got to step back and say, okay, listen, for us to run any additional levies, for us to run another law, for us to do anything now, we've got to go back to the people and make an absolute case that this particular narrow need has to be filled. And so to me, that's how you rebuild it. You rebuild it by getting back control of the whole governance structure that we have. We had three daycares closed this calendar, this board didn't even know about it. And maybe they did, but they made a decision in the central office, never made it by the board because they run the show. And as I've said many times, I'm not running this on the side. I'm not running it to allow other people to make major decisions that affects all these parents across the board. And we need to change that. And so I think having a reconstituted board that does a good job, introduces the drivers, works hard. And then if we have a need, we go back out to the taxpayers. The taxpayers of this county have been very generous. My partner Pete says, they've been very generous to the North County school system. I voted for every levy and every law that's ever come, but I voted against this one. Because it was too much and it was done in the wrong way. And so I think if we've got a need, if we go back to the people and we make the case to the people that this is a specific need for this particular project, for this particular set of circumstances that we need to fill, I think the people in this county will vote for it. Because you're not going to do that, you're not going to do that now. You've got to rebuild that trust first and many of that people are asking for that. And let's be honest, all our taxes are going up. No one's taxes are going down. Right now, even without, even with it, I mean, everybody's taxes are going up. And so we've got to make that case.
I think a lot of people in the county were happy that it didn't pass. I mean, seventy percent kind of chose that. So I mean, I don't think everyone is on the distrust. I mean, I was talking to a gentleman, I wouldn't say threatened, but borderline threatened that if I put the levy up and voted for it, that he was coming after me. So I mean, people are very adamant about, you know, seventy percent speaks loud volumes. But I think Becky's right. I don't think the information was given out to the public about exactly what that levy was for. I thought it was for libraries. Everybody was like, if you're for the library, you're against the library. It had so much more to do than just libraries. And I think that you have to put information out so that people have an educated opinion on what their voting wants. You know, if another levy comes specifically for libraries and it comes before us and we decide, yes, that it's the voter's decision. You know, there's five of us, five people on the board. Yes, we have that power, but ultimately, the beauty of it all is it's the voter's decision. And I think that the voters kind of spoke it pretty loud and clear as to they didn't want their tax dollars raised that high again. So I mean, I just think that we need to look at what we're doing and put the information out as a whole, all the information out so that the people who are interested can get an educated opinion and vote for, know exactly what they're voting for as opposed to just reading what they see on Facebook.
And then in addition to that, it really has given, people who run the board black out.
Yeah.
I mean, I go out there on the campaign trail and they're saying, are you crazy? Why would you want to do that?
I think people have said that for years.
So there's a little respect for the board.
How do you think?
Do you want to?
Repeat questions?
I have one question. Answer is right there. But if you wanted to respond, like something said, I saw you shook your head, maybe you want to respond.
All I should say was, you know, look out and believe inside what means, be like as a person. If we want to buy a new car, you know, you don't have the money, then we don't get to buy a new car. We can't go out here and say, well, boss, will you give me a raise of nine years' pay? That's the same thing we're going to the board if you say, hey, we need to do this. But if we operate inside a two-hundred-and-sought million dollar budget right here, we can make a lot. First place, stream this budget back down. There's so much waste stuff there that's over here. I mean, I go buy places on a Sunday of all day. North County school bay, sitting on a parking lot, the guy guys there kicking back and sleeping. Now, that's blessed. I've seen it several times. I've seen places that shouldn't be. But that's your, I mean, there's a lot of waste things to be cut out. And we take care of the buildings we have and not let them get something out of hand to be deteriorated. We don't have to build them. And that's where a lot of money, you know, stays small and is fast. And that's where a lot of money, you know, staying small and fast.
We have no, we have no money.
I mean, it's not, I mean, you seen the part of the day, one of those pay mom, your head of risk for all. And if they had the material, they'd risk back to operate. I mean, I don't know what to say. I mean, I don't even, I mean, two-hundred-and-seventy million dollars is a lot of money. Our county, our county don't even operate on that much money. Can, can all county, can we just, what they got, eight million, something like that they operate? Two-hundred-and-seventy million dollars. The home's spent probably. I mean, it's just.
We have twenty-eight thousand kids to educate.
Yeah, I understand that. I know where the money is. It's just, it's complicated.
And it's not a perfect system to end that, but, um.
I don't have, I have lots of board members we got right now. I could get a whole team. I could get a whole team. That's no problem there. I mean, they think they're everything alone. It has to be a team effort with everybody. There's a lot of them that want to pop over with the team. They want their, right, and that way.
We haven't looked at the education one last question.
He said yesterday, he had a list like this. I'm not even sure how to wind it down. Um, so we kind of touched on everything that I was thinking of. But I know there's, uh, I've seen on Facebook and different types of, almost like community groups that have organized a thing like, you know, wanting to vote in different people. Have the administration changed. So, whether that be the president members or Dr. Durin, anything like that. So, maybe it also kind of like a, won't be asked a question for you to answer differently than you all. But, um, as, as the board, whether you're elected or reelected, um, do you have, you know, confidence in Dr. Durin and things like that? Because I don't have a sense of people who, you know, outside voters. I'm afraid it's important, I'm sorry, but, um.
This is a question basically, major changes made by the school system versus kind of giving things on a similar course.
This, yeah. I mean, what I noticed is a lot of people are wanting a little change. Do, do you even still change whether you're elected or reelected or do you stay with, is that a score?
Because that's, is that, can I start?
Of course.
Um, but to be honest with you, I mean, I feel like a parent that's all over this valley, and not that he's loved by everyone, no one is, but I don't hear that from Dr., I don't hear that about Dr. Durin. Yeah, it's probably people just like me, the ways I vote or he, but I feel like Dr. Durin is accessible. I mean, I've seen people, I don't do social media, but people send me that. And, you know, and make your one album. And you were in the state legislature where you could have made some education changes. They tie our hands to a lot of things. But whatever, I don't know what you were doing to Senate, but it wasn't with education, with your complaints now. But Dr. Durin does a really good job. He's accessible to everyone that calls, and I've never heard a parent say he's not. And, um, as far as I'm concerned, if I'm reelected on the school board, he will continue to be our state, um, county superintendent. And I feel like you have five school board members right now that would all tell you the same. Ditto Mr. Paul.
I thought you two were gonna do it.
Yeah, all right. Say your opinion, I guess.
I've really never dealt with Dr. Durin and, but I have heard pros and cons both of them. Just the last third that attracted me to like the field. I had three or four parents say, what are you gonna do about Dr. Durin? And you feel like, well, I don't know. So, I can't, I, I'd say we ought to, like, do an evaluation on him and I make my decision that way. But I've never had any personal feelings with him. You know, but on down from the list, I think we can kind of change some system in administration down there, change it around a little bit and find new ideas with the people. But Dr. Durin is a thing that we all have to stand, we just figure out when that time comes. I mean, he served longer than any superintendent in history in state or his town. But some people want change. Changes coming like in that levy in November to now, they, they're being, it's like, we're gonna change all the way through. So, I, I just have to see what happens if I get elected. Talk to them. They're really thoughtful all year though. Been around him. I mean, I've seen him often in that lake field or something like that. Seen him around, but it's the same thing. So, I really don't wanna say, ah, throw him out there and I'm letting, I don't really think it is. You just have to wait till you sit down and talk to him and see, oh, yeah, you know, how he's out of his operating space.
Um, I have special needs kids and in the special needs world, education, you'd be quite poor from the ground up. So, I've dealt with Dr. Durin numerous times. Sometimes nicely, sometimes with my momma claws out. But, um, I've never contacted him where he either didn't answer the phone or called me back or emailed me that day. Um, we may not have always exchanged pleasantries when he did call back. But, um, again, I'm gonna get my momma mode on for a sec. So, um, but however, I think there's a huge disconnect with communication from Dr. Durin. I think there needs to be some, um, just for instance, like how we call off schools. I understand there's no outside we call off schools. However, temperature wise, if, if we call off school when it's zero degrees, then let's say we call off school when it's zero degrees. Let everybody know that upfront. So, if the weatherman says tomorrow it's gonna be negative five, then parents might say, hey, we're at least gonna have a two-hour delay. I need to make arrangements because I have to go to work tomorrow. I don't think there's a big communication of how we do things in our system. I think that could be one easy change to make. Um, do I think he needs to be ousted? No, I'm not saying that. Do I think he's perfect? Absolutely not. I think that, um, you know, we can always do better. Communication from Dr. Durin would be the, the one thing that I would like to see from the board anything.
I work with Dr. Durin every day. I work with him multiple times every day. I give him multiple requests every day. I have a great deal of faith in the fact that when I ask Dr. Durin to take care of something, that it will be taken care of. And I can cross him off the list and go on to the next item. I'll tell you this, when, when and if Dr. Durin ever leaves here, you're gonna see the biggest hat of that you've ever seen. Because every, there's about half a dozen principals out there on his job. And probably not one of them would, would use it, but they all want. And it's just crazy. Dr. Durin is a, is lightning rod because everyone's looking for somebody to blame for something they're unhappy about. And he's the guy at the top of the poll. You know, the board cannot hire one person. We can't hire or fire the one person of that thousands who work for us except for one man. And that's Dr. Durin. He's the only one we can hire. He's the only one we can fire. And he takes all the rest of the, so. And he and I have battled for, I'd say easily since he got here, I'm the maintenance director. But we don't get mad at each other. We just say, well, there's none of them. But that's the way it goes. Beautiful. He's good to work with. I agree with what Becky charged us.
Back on the, I don't, I don't mean over, we can't impose on the levy, but you were obviously against the levy.
Very, oh, you noticed.
That's what I said, so I'm afraid of that. Durin was out, saying we can use the money.
He was the biggest proponent.
Yeah.
He had, he had, um.
Similar setup though? You said, I don't want it. He said, I do want it. You said, all right, fine.
Sure, I agree. And we went to work the next day. And we worked together the next day. But we fought like Kebabs was old. And he, he lost and I wondered, we never mentioned it. We just went on to the next problem the next day. And what are you gonna do?
I just wanted nothing for it.
Well, that makes us continue to keep working and move forward when we can forget what's happened. I mean, that's always been like that.
As big as this system, there's no time for personal fun and games. There's no time. There's no time to kid each other. There's just time to work.
All right, back to work. Who were we talking about?
This is really, well, it's kind of rapid. But your question was making changes.
Not, not just up during, just making, making changes.
You know, the last person to run on this line of change.
What'd he tell you?
We're not going along.
I will say this, so he did not, this is an ordinary question.
Well, obviously, I've been in the system as a principal last twenty-eight years. So, I was there when he's became the superintendent. I was there when he was assistant superintendent. I was there when he was the principal. So, I've been around a long time. I, I, it sounds like I just got the opposite. I, I, I sense that there's fear on all these parts to get towards there. I, I think there's, I think there's, uh, or to react in a way that they want to react. I bet employees to stand with me in, in our campaign trail. And there's employees that do that. Because no fear, no fear for Dr. Durin might go on and off. So, I, I guess the bottom line is, is he's a great superintendent. If you agree with him, but if you disagree with him, push him difficult with the tax laws. And, uh, that's been my experience over the years. And I know, I'm, I'm using this example last week, and I know you said the board demanded that he did this. I went into a meeting with all the prince high school principals in the county and, uh, without any indication, which is common, it was, well, we didn't block scheduling as of next school year. Well, I had worked years to get non-block scheduling like I wanted it. And I was the first principal to see that it can get done and stuff. But then just a jerk, a rugout member, uh, without any indication or any, and all the board said to do that, I disagreed with the board to do that, the opposite of that. But at the same time, but at the same time, he should have handled it differently, in my opinion. I, I know he was given a job to do, but he should have handled it that differently. And, and it left a sour taste in my mouth. And, 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 um, that's just an example. But I, I, I do think employees are fearful of, of vindictiveness, for lack of a better term. Um, I, I do think there's, there's fear of, of voicing a fit, even, even in, in, in the central office.
If you're happy with the way things are going, then you probably don't want to elect me. I mean, I, I'm not running to kind of let things, let's just keep things going the way they are going. And, and let's be honest, the Senate Education Committee didn't close down three daycare centers. And this did not help the school. Okay? Whenever we were in the Senate, we always blamed the federal government. And I guess the school board is, it blames, blames the state. And everyone blames the ones above them of why things happen a certain way. And I don't have any doubt that these school boards do have handcuffs sometimes. Doesn't mean you can't be active, doesn't mean you can't make changes, doesn't mean you can't do some of the things that need to be done. And, and the way I look at Dr. Durin, Dr. Durin's always been more than pleasant to me. I have no personal negatives against him. He don't last sixteen years in Connaught County schools and not have some level or a strong level of talent. Um, but, but again, it, it shows a disconnect between the administration and the people of the county. The people of the county want changes. They want to do better. They, they want our county system to do better. Um, and, and I, I think Dr. Durin, if he, if he, you know, I, I think people automatically say that if I get on there and the majority of people think like we get on there, Dr. Durin's gonna be fired. That's not the case. It's absolutely not the case. A lot of it is just strictly communication. A lot of it is a lack of, of, of interaction and a lack of reaching out, a, a lack of involving stakeholders in decision-making process. And certainly, if the administration, Dr. Durin's willing to make those changes and involve more stakeholders, well, then heck, I, I think he's a talented guy. But look, the people in this county want change. That was clear in the levy election. I think it'll be clear in this, this May election. And they want people that are gonna be active and actually try to make those changes clear better. And that, that's why I want on the board, I want on the board to sit and say, everything's hunky-dory. Let's keep it going. We can do a lot better. And, and I feel like that's, that's the direction we take.
Um, as far as Dr. Durin, I have, I mean, I've heard a lot of people, like I said before, that there's a lot of people that don't, that think that, um, he doesn't listen and more so sort of doesn't mean it's for us. Um, but there are, there are also a lot of, uh, people that, that like him as well. I have not, I mean, I've been introduced to him and talked with him briefly. And, um, I've not, but I've not really dealt with him on a day-to-day basis. So, I can't say that, that I would, um, if, if that's, if you wanted to get out of me that I would make a change or not make a change. I can't say that I, I would definitely do either one of those right now. I do think there are some issues with, um, from what I've heard. And, and I could be wrong. The person who told me this could, could be biased or something. But there, there may be a way we can rework the current, uh, setup for the administrators that, that makes more sense, um, where, where, uh, some of these communication issues may not be as big of a problem. There may be too many layers in there. But like I said, I would, I would wanna look at it myself, get his input, get the, get everyone's input before I did something like that. Um, I mean, like I said, I think the number one priority is, is educating our kids. And I will do what I think is necessary to educate our fellow kids.
Well, thank you all for coming today. Um, there's gonna be different, different staff, different, uh, and we'll be here in a few minutes. Was it not the respect we're done?
Just real quick, um, just get this, so you were one, one, and one. And you were four, two.
Three.